I'd like to call the Lancaster Central District Board of Education meeting to order. In the unlikely event, we have to evacuate the boardroom, please note the locations of the exits. At this time, I ask you to silence your cellphones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for individual reflection and for Mr. Jeff Simi, Code Enforcement Officer for the Town of Lancaster who passed away on May 22nd, 2017.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. 4.0 presentations, there are none today. Oh, also wanted to let you know that Mr. Utegus not with us today. He had a family obligation that he had to attend to, so he is excused from the meeting as well, so. Alright, correspondence, we had a letter from Stephen Peace on May 22nd, 2017. Anyone else receive any correspondence on the board? Alright, 6.0 approval of minutes. 6.1, can I have a motion to approve the annual budget hearing on May 8th?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 6.2, can I have a motion to approve the regular session on May 8th as well?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 6.3, approval of the regular session on May 16th?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 7.0, items from staff organizations, anybody from the Lancaster Administrative or Supervisory Association wish to address the board? Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association? Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? And anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? Okay, 8.0 board reports, anybody on the board have anything they'd like to report?
Okay, the last board meeting we had, I told you that I would be attending the Commissioner's roundtable in Albany. I did that, it was awesome. It was probably one of the greatest things I've done since being on the board, to be honest with you. Having the attention of the Commissioner with 18 other board members from around the state was very valuable, so thanks for supporting my trip out to Albany. Let me just tell you a little bit about what happened. So in the morning, we met with NISBA's Executive Director as well as the President of NISBA for about two hours, and we discussed teacher shortages as well as the new ESSA Plan draft. We came up with a list of concerns, local concerns that we each had. I was the only board member on this side of Syracuse, so I had a different take on it than some of the ones in Long Island, for example. You think we have problems, go to Long Island. It's pretty nice here. Anyway, we discussed shortages and, like I said, the new plan, and came up with a list of questions and comments that we wanted to make when the Commissioner came. We were so into it, we didn't even break for lunch. We brought lunch back to the table, we sat in this big, huge room with a bunch of the NISBA members too, and we actually ate and talked at the same time because we were so into what we were doing. Okay, so anyway, we came up with a list of reasons for the teacher shortage and what we could do to try and increase that. One of the things was the disrespect this profession has, as we know, and the Commissioner was fully supportive of that. She's very pro-teacher, at least in my opinion she is, and she was a teacher, so she understands. And she's very concerned as well, obviously. But we talked about things about like the amount of education needed, the pay, for example, there's so many other companies that would take a teacher, you know, the same education, you can make double the pay. For example, if you were going into computer science, you could work for a company like Google, make twice as much money, no master's degree, right out of college. So we're competing against that. And then the loss of our benefits, and now with our pension being in some slight jeopardy, I think it's gonna get worse before it gets better, so buckle up. The ESSA Plan, one thing I loved about my visit with her is the fact that she is willing to listen to stakeholders, and as past experience will show, I'm pretty big on that, and listening to those who are on the frontlines and those of us who are willing to talk with her, she's willing to listen. So she did that, and one of the big things she's doing, or her department is doing, is sending a group all over the state to review the plan. And it's this Thursday, I told you guys all about it the past couple months, I will be there, and I gave you the plan, I hope if you had a chance to read it or look it over. She's looking for feedback and input and comments and so on. Doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna change anything, but there were things that we brought up that she's like, you know what, I'm gonna take a look at that. And the fact that she's even said that, I was happy, so if you could be there, please do so. This is our chance, I mean, this is the public's chance to weigh in on it. If you don't, then you live with it. You can sit behind a keyboard and complain all you want, it's not gonna do a thing. You have to show up, you have to get involved. So I will be there, I hope some of you can join me. We talked about testing too, because that just kinda came up, and I think it's because we had her attention, and the state testing, and she obviously inherited the problem. And she's, in my opinion, she's trying her best to fix it. It's not perfect, but she did inherit a mess. But they're making some progress forward, and she's really just looking for acknowledgement of that forward progress. She realizes that it's not perfect, but she's trying, and she's making some efforts. She did say some pretty interesting things to us about it, and I made some notes that are kind of all over, so bear with me, but one of the things she said about testing was that next year, all the questions will be questions written by the teachers. This year, there was like a percentage, if I'm not mistaken, next year, all of them will be, which I like. And then she talked about the new standards. I was unaware of this, but the new standards are not being implemented this fall. Did you know that, Dr. Valley? Did you know that? I did not know that, I thought they were. Another great thing about her, she's learning from past mistakes and is not jamming this down anyone's throat. She wants everyone trained, she wants teachers to understand it before we go about doing it, which is awesome, and I love that. So overall, my meeting with her was great, I absolutely loved it. Lastly, I just wanted to make a comment about the Unified Basketball Team. I wasn't, I was able to go to the first game, and that was it. Every other game, I had a legislative meeting, or it was in Albany, or something came up, and I never got to go to another one. But that first one that we had was probably, besides my meeting with the Commissioner, the best thing we've done. I stopped for a second, was able to take it all in, and I watched other people. I watched Dr. Valley smiling, I saw Mr. Wild with this big smile on his face, and the coach with the big smile on his face, and the kids. And it was just incredible to watch kids with special needs, which I spend all day with, mixing with the general population, and those general typical kids were so encouraging and so supportive. It was awesome, it was just a feel-good moment, and I think we all needed it at that point, we're all tired, it's the end of the year, we're all stressed, that just totally breathed new life into me. So I'm so glad we did that, we did it at my school too now, and it's just awesome. It's everyone who's doing it, involved in it, has been to it, no one has a negative thing to say, so I wish I could've went to more, but I'm glad I was there for the first one. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mrs. Christopher, I agree. The Unified Basketball Game that many of us were there for was a really great experience, and we're looking forward to many more years with that program, so. Anyone else on the board? Anything else to report? The one thing I will add for my board report, because I was able to attend the William Street Triathlon for the first time this year, and motivated my daughters to learn how to ride bikes, and a few scrapes, but everyone made it out alright, and I eventually found my glasses for those people who were helping me search around. I did find them, somebody turned them in, thank God, I got lucky, so it was, I had a moment where panic struck in, but everything's good, so. But thank you to all, the staff of William Street, and a lot of the elementary school principals were there as well, so it was nice to see a district-wide event with so very well-attended and very well-run, and food trucks and a lot of fun times had by all, so. That's all I have. Okay, 9.0, superintendents report. Dr. Valley?
I just wanted to qualify one of the things that Mrs. Christopher was talking about, and that is just, you know, this is New York State's, I also encourage people to go, I'll be there, five o'clock on Thursday, I think, 6:30, maybe I won't be there. Alright, well, it might have a conflict at 6:30, I have it down at 5:00, but anyway, one of the important things is that this is New York State's application to the federal government's ESSA Plan, as she articulated. And one of the things, there are many things in there, and one of the things about testing is that 3 through 8 testing's not going away. That's still mandated by the federal government and has been since 2001. So we're going to, we, all school districts in the nation, and here in New York State, are gonna have to confront the fact that all students have to take 3 through 8 testing, and what ramifications that has for the lack of 95% participation and all those things. But the reason I'm bringing that up is that it's an issue here in Lancaster, it's an issue here at districts throughout New York State and the country, and that hasn't been changed by our federal government in their most recent adoption of that legislation. So that's disappointing, I think, but like Mrs. Christopher said, we have to deal with what we have, and this is the Commissioner putting her application into the federal government's plan, and how that matches and if it gets approval. So I wanted to mention that, and then some good stuff. For the seventh year in a row, the Lancaster Academy of Finance has been awarded Distinguished Academy Status by the National Academy Foundation. To put this into perspective, this means that our academy in Lancaster has been one of the top academies in the country, top 10 most of those years. There's only one other school district in the 98 school districts in Western New York who have even made academy status, and that school district is Clarence, and they just made it for the first time this year, so congratulations to them. The excellent work of these students coupled with the support of teachers, administration, the Board of Education, and our academy proves that our academy is worthy of this honor. And again, I've said this many times, we're fortunate to have a community that supports this endeavor and all the others. I wanted to mention our choral competition for NISBA, New York State School Music Association was held here a while back, and I wanted to highlight their accomplishments. The High School Mixed Chorus received a silver rating, the High School Women's Choir received a gold rating, as did the William Street Sixth Grade Chorus, and the Middle School Mixed Chorus once again received gold with distinction. There are many talented students moving through the ranks this year and coming through the system, so many more good years to come. Mr. Gallagher and many others mentioned the triathlon, but it was great to see the students' faces. Assistant Principal here tonight, and she was one of them, watching the smiling faces as they finished the finish line. Congratulations to Becky Edwards, a teacher, and Julie Polthe- Pol-
Poltheir.
Poltheir. I always mess up these French names.
Spanish.
Yeah, I know. And their team for the great accomplishments, it was a great thing, and so thanks to all for being involved in that. One of the things that Mrs. Edwards and Poltheir added this year was actual timing system, and that was a real nice addition, because for the last six years, we've seen students go through, but they really didn't know, have a time, they really couldn't compare and contrast to see how well they did and those kind of things. So they had the little things on with the electrodes and going through the different things, and at the end, everyone could go check and see how well they did in the website, so it was a real nice addition. Congratulations to them for coming up with the idea and working it all out, and a lot of work to put together the largest triathlon in New York State, and it could be the largest triathlon for an elementary school in the country. We don't know that for sure, but it's definitely the largest one in New York State and good old here Lancaster. Zachary Nasbish won second place in this year's Buffalo News editorial cartooning contest. His cartoon was the "Informed Citizen," quote-unquote, and he created, this was specifically cartoons based on issues that are as relevant today as they were in President Roosevelt's time, immigration, business, labor, et cetera. Congratulations to Zachary, and also to Mr. Brett Miller, his teacher, who's done a wonderful job. The board was gifted with a yearbook this year. He and his students just continue to outdo themselves every year, just a wonderful thing. And finally, on the athletic thing, I will not try to tell you all the division championships and the championships and all the other things of all the athletics, because we've had one heck of a year. I'll do that at graduation, that's usually the time that I do that, but I did want to mention, did want to mention that the Buffalo News is honoring three students presently, there will be more, but presently, LG Castillo, first team all Western New York Football, Max Giordano, first team all Western New York Football, and Kirsten Mucha, the overall winner and the rifle, and I think she was also state champion, if I remember correctly.
Record-breaking.
Record-breaking, yeah, thank you. I looked to you because I knew you would remember. So that was all nice stuff, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Valley. Anybody, 10.0, anybody with, any old business? Okay, seen none. 11.0, new business. 11.1, 11.1.1 is a tenure recommendation for Mrs. Janelle Finn. Can I have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. She's here with us today. Dr. Prinney would like to share a few words about Mrs. Janelle Finn. We're gonna, just so everyone knows, we're gonna do the, bring all the board candidates back in September to recognize, because her tenure won't be accepted until then, so.
Well, we have the pleasure tonight of honoring Mrs. Finn, this is her tenure. Now, first off, she makes a great sumo wrestler, and last week, she was one of the sumo wrestlers over at the William Street Assembly. You've also been a pirate that's jumped into a pool, and all kinds of things, stuck to a wall at one point, yes, so you've had all of those experiences. I personally have dealt with Mrs. Finn in the Bullyproof Partnership, and she has a great deal of passion and feeling for the kiddos, and she's shown that in all of her meetings, all of the meetings that I've been at with her. She's pivotal in the ELA alignment, vertical alignment, with Dr. Kufel and Mrs. Marchioli. We're trying to get everybody along the same path, and this is a critical piece in this. We also, this year, we did computer-based testing, and every time we had a question, she was part of a very strong administrative team over there, and she was one of the, one of two strongest, who knew the answers for everything. And if she didn't, she'd be off, going to get that answer, so she certainly is an important person. But Mrs. Bull told me that I needed to particularly say this, she has revised and revived the RTI process for William Street School, making it aligned with what it needs to be, and also making it valuable for kids so that we can do good selections and we can give kids the services they need. So we've really, a wonderful person here, and we congratulate Mrs. Finn on her receiving tenure.
Congratulations, Mrs. Finn, very well-deserved honor. Alright, 11.1.2 is a tenure recommendation for a list of about four teachers. Can I have a motion to accept that as well? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Just as a point, those teachers will be brought back in September as well for a tenure recommendation. Yeah, I don't think any of them are here.
What usually happens is we have them accepted.
Yeah, I want to recommend.
And they can't actually, none of them actually get tenure until-
Until September.
-time is complete and a date, so consequently, we, the following meeting after that is where we bring them, and then we talk about each teacher and her individual.
Next, 11.1.3, superintendent's employment contract, can I have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? So moved. 11.1.4, personnel changes, can I have a motion to accept that as well?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. 11.2, education items, 11.2.1, can I have a motion to accept the Committee on Preschool Special Education?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.0, business and financial items, 12.1, can I have a motion to accept the financial items?
So moved.
Any discussion at all? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. 11.2, I'm sorry, 12.2, policy adoption, 7222, this is diploma and credential options for students with disabilities, can I have a motion to accept that? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. The next three policies, 12.3, 12.4, and 12.5. 12.3's a second policy reading, 7521 with students with life-threatening health conditions. Policy, 12.4, a policy, the first reading of 6470, acceptable use policy, and then also first reading policy 8271, Children's Internet Protection Act, Internet Content Filtering and Safety Policy. We will discuss those at a further time and vote on them as well, so. Alright, 12.6, can I have a motion to accept the Food Service Operating Ports for April?
So moved.
Any discussion at all? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.7, surplus equipment, can I have a motion to accept that? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.8, auction results, can I have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion at all? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. 12.9 is a bid award with conjunction with a few districts to share services with Refuge and Recycling, I believe it was Depug, Clarence, and Alden. Can I have a motion to accept that? Contract?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.10 is a club creation of Minecraft Club at the middle school. Can I have a motion to accept that?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Okay, 12.11 is the next year's substitute rates, can I have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Yes, quick question.
Sure.
I'm trying to get this right now, that was just like bus drivers' aides supplemental, correct? That wasn't teacher substitute thing?
Teacher substitute is a separate bargaining unit?
Yeah. Yeah. I think this was the one we discussed in, yeah, in January, I believe.
In January, the board discussed a five-year plan.
That's what I thought.
We were talking increment.
I looked at it, I just wanted to be sure that I-
It was right there.
Yep.
I was just thinking of something that I saw in my notes, from teacher shortage thing, about fifteen, but it was a good one.
Sounds good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.12 is a motion to accept the payment of all bills, can I have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Any discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.13 is to accept the bond issued change orders, can I have a motion to accept that? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.14 is agreement with the Omni Group, can I have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.15 is a health service agreement with the Buffalo City School District, can I have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
You need a second.
You need a second.
Do we have one? I'm sorry, I thought we did. I'm sorry, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.16, health service agreement with Kenmore-Tana-Tanawanda School District, can I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.17, professional development plan, can I have a motion to accept that? Any discussion at all? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 13.0 is a public hearing. Just be aware, we have one person on the list today. Any person who's notified the district clerk per policy 1514 may speak at this time. Speakers must first be recognized and then identify themselves by stating their name and address. The time limit is to speak two, five minutes per person. We have one person on the list today. We have Jeffrey Capella.
Is this on? Oh, great. My name is Jeffrey Damon Capella, I live at 214 Argus Drive. I first want to thank the school board for extending us the courtesy of their time. That formality mine eyes, among other things, as a trained policy analyst, have some observations and questions I would like to bring to the board's attention. Consistently outlined by the United States Department of Treasury Office of Public Debt, the United States domestic financial and policy environment is increasingly defined by fiscal scarcity. Furthermore, the X-factors that underwrite such socioeconomic and financial trends are due to a demographic reality, specifically an aging population. Subsequently, the financial challenges facing the United States are structural in nature and almost assuredly for the foreseeable future only going to rise. From a budgetary perspective, the financial challenges posed by the rise of non-military public consumption, defined as Social Security, American, or Medicaid, place financial pressures on discretionary expenditures like education. The financial challenges facing the United States at the national level serve as a useful backdrop for the policy challenges being felt at the local level. Of particular note is the personal day-to-day challenges faced by elderly and retired Lancaster residents who live on fixed incomes. The fixed nature of retirees translate in any increase in tax rates resulting in a negative impact on the purchasing power and subsequently quality of life value of Lancaster residents. Given the budgetary challenges facing the United States at the national level coupled with the local impacts such trends have here in Lancaster- with the local impact such trends have here in Lancaster, my question centers on an issue that was brought up at the last presentation headed by Dr. Valley during the 2017-2018 budget presentation held on May 8, 2017. During that presentation, Dr. Valley made some somewhat odd and contradictory statements, or at least they weren't clear to me. For example, Dr. Valley stated numerous times that, quote-unquote, "the old ways don't work." While I tend to agree with that overall assessment, what was particularly, I don't know, of an, I don't know, odd, was the follow-up statements made by Dr. Valley, specifically that we are, quote-unquote, "not going to leave money on the table with a tax cap." Understandable. And that, quote, "we would offset revenue shortfalls with monetary reserves." Such approaches are synonymous with traditional approaches, read the old ways, towards ensuring a stable funding stream needed to provide consistent goods and services, in this case, education. Subsequently, Dr. Valley's follow-up statements were contradictory to the previous observation voiced by Dr. Valley. Even more concerning to me was the fact that Dr. Valley stated numerous times that his, quote-unquote, "new approach" was to, quote-unquote, "kick the can down the road." From the perspective of a trained policy analyst, such a statement conjures to mind suboptimal policy whose nature is both reactionary and shortsighted and seeks to deficit expend while Dr. Valley's current superintendent, only to leave a financial crisis, albeit maybe unwittingly, for a replacement should he leave office. Given those oddities, my questions are as follows. One, what specific policies has the Board previously enacted or envisioned for the future that will bring in a sustainable manner costs and resources into balance while maintaining and/or increasing the quantity and quality of education services provided? Two, where can said policies be viewed? Three, what specific considerations have the School Board included in said policy development to ensure that any policy currently enacted or envisioned in the future are either Pareto optimal and/or a Calldar Hicks improvement? And four, what's, where specifically are those considerations documented in any policy enacted or envisioned? In closing, let me be very clear, ladies and gentlemen. I like these public policy challenges are not going away. That said, unlike career politicians, my goal as a loyal soldier and a policy analyst is to ensure that any policy to address challenges facing the United States and Lancaster community are maximally efficient and operate under either a Pareto optimal or a Calldar Hicks framework. That said, I would like to again thank the Board for extending me the courtesy of their time and attention, and I look forward to receiving my answer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Capella. 14.0, future presentations. At this point, we don't have any scheduled. We do have another meeting scheduled, June, June 19, regular session here at 7:00 PM. Can I have a motion? 15.0, adjournment. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Everyone have a great night. Thank you, and welcome, Mr. Alfred.